We're going to open the meeting of January 28th, the Selectman's Meeting. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Uh, we got a minute, so, uh, why don't we? I only read the January 2nd and the January 17th.
Yeah, the other ones came too late today.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't mind if we just approve those two tonight. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Seconded.
Any changes or anything? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, I don't know. Oh, we'll give them a minute.
Three, three's quick.
Okay, dissolution of the Town Barn Planning Committee with thanks. Understanding that the Town Barn project is completed, I'll take a motion to disalute the Town Barn Planning Committee. Dissolve.
Seconded on the dissolute.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we want to do our 7:05 appointment now?
Absolutely.
I think, um, you probably need to cancel it. I think it really should be the committee that presents to you. And Tim Pierce was going to be the one to do it. He's sick tonight, and he tried to get somebody else to come, and I came because I didn't see any responses, so I don't think anyone else is coming. It probably should be Tim or Garth that presents it. They kind of are the most knowledgeable and kind of pushing. I would prefer that it's them.
Can we ask just a couple of questions that you can pass on?
Um, sure.
Okay. Um, so I didn't know whether the committee had looked into changing the .com to .gov. Have they looked into how that affects everyone? Do you know?
So what would happen is if the change was made, the .com wouldn't go away like tomorrow.
Right.
Everything would be linked together, so there wouldn't be any immediate effect, and changes could be made over time until that .com could be dissolved. So we'd take some time for that, you know, probably over the course of two years would be my thought process, or any reasonable time for people to change things, because, you know, we can't change business cards, things like that overnight. That wouldn't make-
No.
-a cost sense.
No, I figured there'd be some time where it would just move you to the correct link.
Right.
But I was just wondering if, I mean, what the length of time that would be? You're saying a couple of years?
I think, I mean, that's just me being the layperson thinking. Um, you know, if it needed to be longer, I think we could extend it, and if it was shorter, then we could cut it off sooner.
Okay.
You know, we pay for the .com domain year by year, so.
The other thing I was wondering was, had they, had anyone asked, any of the other department heads?
This was kind of, they brought it up, floated on it a couple of times, because I dragged my feet on it the first time. Again, it wasn't my first choice. It was kind of what they wanted to do, and they pushed forward again, so that's why I think it's better for them to explain what they see as the benefits of it.
Do you want to ask them whether they want to come or answer the questions?
Yeah, so Tim Pierce said in his email that he would be willing to come next week if no one else could come. So if you put him back on the agenda next week, he should be able to come.
Okay.
He's got the flu.
Yeah.
He was diagnosed with the flu this morning, so. He would have come, but he didn't think it was probably the best.
No, probably not, and I'm actually kind of glad he didn't. What is on our agenda next week, Mary? Is it a busy one?
It's at the 4th, we have the RFP for the Fire Chief.
That's probably one of the appointments, maybe?
We're only down one. That's at 7:10.
I think that's the only appointment. It is the only appointment. It's at 7:10.
So there's not that much, so, uh, what's, what time is the first one?
7:10, there's only one.
Oh, is it 7:10? Okay.
Is that 7:10? Yeah.
Um, I don't know.
7:05 or?
Well, no, I, let's, does he mind coming at like 7:20, 7:30?
I'll email him right now that they're running for 7:20, and if it gets a little bit later, that's fine.
Thank you.
7:20 or later?
Right now, so don't forget.
Well, they'll figure it out, but probably 7:20.
So you're only going to give 10 minutes to the one RFP person?
Well, just really hold the IT person in the audience until you're done.
Okay.
And that would be the 4th.
Yes.
Okay, um, we did the two meeting minutes. Appointment of the OSHA Safety Officer. Kind of looking to be a little creative here, because I was thinking maybe it would be the Fire Chief, but since we don't-
Have one.
Have one, yeah. But, so what is, what are your thoughts?
Well, I mean, I'm tending not to lean on Joe, because he's already busy, and this is just adding additional time to him. Can we wait until the interim is in place in a few weeks?
I think there was a deadline by which we had to let Maya know.
Well, I think Maya just wants to be notified. I don't think that there's a legal requirement that Maya be informed. They just want to know who it is.
I know. I thought it was February something or other, though.
True. That's when the law kicks in.
Would it be a good idea to have someone in the position temporarily, just until, or just let it go for now?
I think I'd rather wait.
All right.
Yeah. We'll have a name for them probably sometime next month for the interim person.
Right.
Before he leaves, do you want to talk about the town office's storm closure policy, which is the last thing on the agenda?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Tom?
Yes.
Uh, what can we do to help with this, the storm closure, the-
I think the easiest thing is just to talk to the department heads, and if they have changes, you know, I don't know who wants to maintain a list and then just have them let whoever is going to be the person that oversees the list. I don't know if that's a personnel thing, if that's a-
I think other than Molly, these are our employees, right? Pretty much everybody in the town offices who would need to be notified, other than essentially the employees.
My only thought is that I don't necessarily want it to be me that I get five department heads saying, "Oh, I want this person on, I want this person on, I want this person on, I want this person on."
Well, it would just be employees, I think.
Right.
Employees that come to this building, and we have to let them know it's closed. It's not, I don't think it would be committees and all those people.
I would hope not, that we don't expand it too far.
I would say our office already maintains a list of our employees and their phone numbers, or it should.
I don't, I haven't.
Then we should.
So like the new hires at the treasure collector's office? I don't have contact information.
And I think June made a recommendation that we put that, when we hire new people, that we put that on the in and outtake.
Yeah.
And I think that's probably a very good way to go.
Would it be, would even the treasurer be someone who could just, since they actually-
For hires, but not for volunteers?
No, but it wouldn't be for volunteers, really.
This isn't volunteers, this is people who work in the building, really.
The only one I made an exception for was Fran, because-
She used to get in.
Works in the building.
Yeah.
I think this is kind of one of the things that highlights our HR black hole.
Yeah, I know.
If you don't have someone kind of in charge of that overall-
Right.
-to manage our employees, so.
Do you want an email sent out to all departments, or just to the employees of this building, that they should give you the correct contact information? Because you're sending the robocall, we're not.
Right, it's just easier for me if I get sent a spreadsheet, because then I just upload the spreadsheet versus being the keeper of the records all the time. So I would ask that someone else do it if it comes down to it, that I have to do it.
I can send, I'll create a Google Doc and just tell people to just keep their, you know, the employees of this building, keep it updated. Whatever the best number is, sell or land, whatever one number they want.
Whatever one number they prefer.
Okay. I'll do that tonight.
Okay.
Because you have to storm tomorrow, but not-
Yeah, and the other thing that, once the new website gets up, there's a notification section in there that we can put in that can allow people to leave emails as well, if they sign up, or whichever kind of, you know, if we did an emergency, town offices are closed, that would not only go out to whoever, you know, that could go out to anybody who would sign up, employees and non-employees.
Right.
Our church does that.
Yeah.
You get an email blast.
Well, we're right now, though, we're talking just to-
Just employees.
People, yeah, just the people that come to the building.
Yeah.
Okay. Mary, if you don't mind, that'd be great.
I'll do that tonight, yeah.
Um, oops. Um, the Selectman's Annual Report. Are we-
No.
-deferring that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's half done, remains half done.
Okay.
So until next week?
Yes.
Now, what was the deadline on that, Tricia?
Um, January 21st. I sent out an email today reminding you.
I got it. Yes, I would like to do it.
Of what?
The deadline for the town report was actually January 21st.
Yes.
I just want to make sure, not just for us, but for anybody else, too.
Right.
Well, I sent it to town reports.
Who's late, besides us?
There are a few others that are late. Oh, there's one in the back.
There's 28 reports that are late.
I'm late.
As of today.
Okay.
But I sent an email to them, telling them I was going to be late, because avoiding some information and dispatch would be final.
So I don't know where exactly when you were on time.
All right, so, um-
Yeah, but you were-
Selection of the Town Administrator Executive Recruiting Firm.
We only have five minutes before the next one. Do we want to skip it? Or do you think that the conversation can be done in five minutes?
Uh, well, let's move to number six. Clarification on the Fire EMS Chief Screening Committee Charge. And the reason I put this on here is because I think there's some confusion here in the building, as far as whether we're using the screening committee to do the interim search and the fire search, the Fire Chief search, or just the Fire Chief search. So I just wanted to make it clear to everybody.
I always thought it was both.
I think you thought it was both, too.
Yeah, well, and especially now that we only have one organization-
Committee, yeah.
Yeah, that is putting in an RFP.
Right.
For the Fire Chief. The other two, one backed out, and then we didn't allow one. So I think they should be both.
Eloise asked, because I think someone getting sworn in asked, and when you look at the charge, it says that this committee would be aided by the-
Screening Committee.
No, by the executive recruitment firm. So it kind of implies-
That's what I meant, yeah.
It's just the final hire, not the interim.
Interim.
Right.
But do you want to clarify an email to go out to them? And also-
Yes.
-can I send them all the applications for the interim?
Oh, yeah, we need to giddy up on that.
So everyone, except for the one that you were all copied on, definitely are interim. And that one I asked for clarification on, which I think is probably not interim, but nonetheless, I'm asking him, and I'm going to just, I'll send them all out tonight-
Okay.
-in a Google Drive.
Okay. All right.
And you got the email address for Ted?
Oh, yeah. No, I will add, I will add that to the, okay.
That was Jenny's.
Uh, it's Patty's.
Oh, Patty's, that's right. I'm getting the two CBA people mixed up. All right, um, all right, is, are you guys all set, or?
We are.
All right.
I was hoping there would be at least one more conservation member, but obviously they're not on time.
Well, maybe they'll come in the next, do you want us to wait a minute, or?
Um, if you have something else to go over, sure.
Ted? Ted? Easy peasy.
Well, maybe not.
Okay.
How about the number eight, Town Council Review? I was going to ask you whether we wanted to have Town Council take a look at the right of first refusal and some kind of tax agreement for the solar project on Randall Road.
Yes.
Agreed.
Okay, that was easy. Do you want to, we should probably make, we should probably do a vote. Do I hear, do I hear a vote to approve Town Council for 34 Randall Road?
You need a motion?
We don't, we just both said yes.
All right.
Yes.
Uh, February 11th deadline. Number nine is the February 11th noon deadline for town departments to file FY '20 legislative funding requests.
Uh, that didn't come from you, I just put a date in there.
Okay, so that's tentative until we decide.
Well, if you set a noon date, then that night you could decide how to prioritize, so that would meet their February 15th deadline, if that's, unless you want to back it up another week, until everyone to get everything to you.
One less week would mean that they only have how many days, though?
They would have next Monday's deadline, one week. It's already been out there for a while.
Well, why don't we just do one week, then?
So you want next week at noon to be a deadline, and you could prioritize it, maybe you need more information, you want more documentation from them?
Right.
All right, so that'd be-
February 4th?
Yep.
Yeah.
I sent another reminder today, but, okay. And put on your 11th agenda, or put on, I'll put on the 4th agenda for a first pass, if you want.
Sure.
All right.
Okay, now we're at 20. All right, it's your week.
Sure.
Come on up.
There's supposed to be two more people, but-
Oh.
Talk slowly.
Yeah, exactly.
Interrupt often.
Well, we'll start with the easy one. We've got three things, and then just a couple of other things we'd like to just talk about. First warrant item that we're going to want is, we're buying some property on Peach Hill Road, the old Wendler property, and we just need a town meeting vote for the paperwork part of it. We have the money.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so you have to put in an article for that, then. Ooh, Ashley Davis is wonderful.
Hey!
She wrote it up, it's obviously for Town Council to review, but currently, I don't know if I talked to you guys about the fact that our open space plan has actually expired.
Oh.
Yeah.
Hey, there you go, see, I told you.
So our open space plan, we knew that it was, that last year was the last year for it. I thought that was the end of the year, it was actually June, so I have been in touch with, I got in touch with Planning Board, and then Tim actually found a grant with Central Mass Regional Planning. I applied for the grant, oh, that's right, you signed the grant. We got the grant.
Good, good.
Yay. So we have a meeting Wednesday night with Eli Goldman from Central Mass Regional Planning to start that process.
Okay.
So we're in the process of renewing it, but that poses a little bit of a problem as far as applying for grants for the Wendler property, because you need to have a current open space plan to apply for grants. So Sudbury Valley has agreed to step in and buy the property if the Wendlers don't want to wait as long as it's probably going to take for us to get this all straightened out.
So there may be some other agreement to some kind, like there was, that we signed previously?
Well, that, the agreement that we signed was that, was all part of that, yes, exactly. So this warrant article does reflect that, though.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you guys want this now, or-
Send it.
Mary?
Yeah, I can, I'll email it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Um, so that's the first thing on our list, nice and easy.
Okay.
The second thing is that Dennis had gotten in touch with us about some tax title properties to see if there was anything of interest to conservation. There were 17 properties, and of the 17, six of them, we feel, would be good for conservation land. They either are butt conservation land, or they're in an area where we're trying to connect.
Mm-hmm.
So Walter actually met with Dennis today.
I did, too.
Oh, there you go. So you're familiar with that.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other is, we would like to propose a single-use plastic bag ban for town. I think we talked about this-
I don't know if you talked to me about it, but-
The last time I was here.
Oh, you mentioned it, yeah.
Yeah.
With Hudson?
With Hudson, yeah. So what it looks like will probably happen, their warrant has already closed for their Springtown meeting, so it looks like we'll do it in the spring, and they'll do it in the fall.
So is that an article? Fill me in.
Yeah.
It's a bylaw change.
Okay.
Right, yep. So we will have wording by the 11th, February 11th, is that when?
That's the deadline.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then a couple of other things, I think everybody probably saw the emails with June today, about just looking at some alternative revenue sources, tax title, land sale, which June explained in the emails, might not be a easy dollar-for-dollar kind of thing. Chapter land rollbacks.
Right.
And then the other thing was when we were approached about allowing Boundless Adventures to be on conservation land, there was an agreement, there was a verbal agreement-
Right.
-that we would get some of the revenues that came to the town as part of that agreement, and that-
All of the revenues that came to the town?
No, I think it was actually half.
Well, half would go to Sennies, but the half that came to the town-
Would all come to us.
We thought would go into the fund.
Okay, okay.
Do you happen to know how much revenue there is? Does anybody?
They had a bad year.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Have we gotten anything from them yet?
The weather.
Yeah, he said that they were down by about 40 percent.
From Boundless Adventures?
Oh, yeah. It rained every weekend.
Yep.
Okay. So it sounds like we haven't gotten anything yet.
Don't know anything about how that money was supposed to come to the town?
Yeah, that was the first I'd ever heard of anything.
Come to the town, or come to conservation?
Of any of it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we are supposed to get money from them for, yeah.
Yeah, like a percentage of their gross sales.
I think it was over and above a certain amount for something or other that the Sennies had to pay, though, correct? And then we'd get half of whatever was left after that.
Right.
Right.
And like you said, it was a bad year, a lot of rain.
Yeah.
We should maybe-
Yeah, we should, yeah, we should definitely look into all of those mechanisms, though, because next year might not be a bad year.
I can touch base with Matt Sennie and see what's going on.
Can you get it in writing?
We have it in writing.
Is it?
It was part of the bylaw.
It's a contract.
Yeah, wasn't it part of the-
It's part of the-
Part, yeah.
The agreement to let them use the land.
Yeah.
That way.
So, yay, Liz made it.
All good?
All good. Um, so, I don't know, does anybody have anything else?
Well, just, I would just add to what Carolyn said, that according to SVT, by any standards, we've done more for land protection in this town, and been more aggressive and successful than any town in their whole catchment area. And the reason we've been able to do that is because we had a pot of gold to begin with, so we could negotiate, go out and buy if something comes up. We already missed out on an important linkage between existing conservation land, well, we're linking to Bolton anyway, but this would have been more, we just didn't have the funds to step in and buy it. So having a fund that we can quickly move on is really important. And we've lost, before even Carolyn came along, I can remember, we've lost a couple of key pieces. People just didn't want to fool around with us, wait for town meeting, wait for all this other stuff. So if you're serious about wanting us to continue to protect land in Berlin, it's important that you think about how we might be able to get some funds in our, in our land conservation fund, so that we can move quickly, and people have faith in us, okay?
Yeah.
Well, the CPA should help with that, shouldn't it?
Not much.
Not much?
Well, it doesn't go into effect until fiscal year 2020, so that's first of all. And it will accumulate, so eventually, yes.
But right away, there's only going to be like a dollar fifty in the pot, yeah.
I'm hoping for two dollars.
Two dollars. I'll take 50 cents for you, Carolyn.
You're a good one, Peg.
All right, my pleasure.
Given development pressures, I think the next three, next five years is make or break.
Yeah, it's going to be a-
Are you going to do it, or are you not going to?
We're all seen the results of the development pressures, and those are just going to continue.
Yeah.
There's a couple of farms, there's some great woodland, wildlife habitat, all of it developable. And fortunately, the owners are, you know, love the land, and we might be able to do something with them, but-
Right, but we still need to be able to offer them something, too. Good intentions are great, but-
Comes down to show we're ready.
Comes down to cash, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, if you do get more ideas about ways we could do this, please keep us posted.
Okay.
And don't forget that, you know, those who are amenable to waiting and being patient, the CPA funds can be borrowed against.
Right. Yep.
That was one of the reasons we did it that way.
Yeah, exactly, so, crossing our fingers and just do-
Those are your big, big spots, are.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, there's two of the four big properties that potentially are going to need some sort of something sooner than later. So, uh, but yeah, just know that, you know, we're looking at those, those three things, and we should definitely all find out about the Boundless Adventures Agreement.
Okay.
So we make sure we don't miss out on that, just because someone, because we weren't aware.
Right.
You know, it would be important for us actually to, you know, follow up and find out exactly, we get the CPA, how much can we borrow ahead? When will, when can we borrow, start borrowing against it? Because we've got to, is it two and a half years? Is it next year?
Right, yeah.
So we should-
Well, I don't believe the CPA is totally going to be for conservation, I think it's going to be-
I know.
Conservation, creation.
We know.
I count on that as a big chunk of money available for just conservation.
Right, exactly.
And is that, that's to go back to town meeting?
All of the money gets allocated through town meeting, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Could you talk a little bit more about the single-use ban?
Yep. Single-use plastic bag.
There you go.
Ban.
Ban.
Yep. So it would just mostly be, it would be shopping bags, you know, it doesn't cover like garbage bags, and, uh, it mostly, you know, in Berlin, it's really Highland Commons.
Yep.
You know, the general store, I don't know if they use plastic bags or not. I did-
Paper, I think.
Do, and I did talk to Tim at Indian Head a while, a couple months ago about this, and he's already switched over to paper bags. They do still use the plastic produce bags, but he was amenable to looking into an alternative for that, if that's what made sense, or we decide that we allow that. But, you know, without Hudson going along with it, I'm still gonna have the plastic market, market basket bags in my trees. Unfortunately.
But now we can use the big yellow bags to pick up the plastic bags out of your tree.
Well, there you go. Oh, speaking of those, some people have been wanting to pick up roadside trash and asked if the plastic bags could be made available. Would it be okay if we put a box of them down in the lobby next to the food pantry thing?
We'll see why they don't.
You know, just so the food pantry doesn't think they're for them.
We'll put a little sign on it.
They'll figure it out.
Yeah, exactly. But that's just an easy spot. We're gonna try and put some at 19 Carter, put some at the transfer station.
Good.
Just have them kind of around for people to be able to use.
And I've talked to the people at Bridge Realty. Actually, we only have one box of bags left. Does anyone know of a source that we can get more?
Where did you get them originally?
I think they were brought in on horse and buggy.
There was a contact with TPW, but I'm not sure if that contact is still available. So I can check into it, but if he's not available, we would have to find another way of getting them.
Okay. If you need the highway superintendent's email, you can contact Mary.
Okay.
And just email him and see if he has a source for that.
Well, this came out too. The Massachusetts beautification bulletin came to us and actually we were gonna talk about it tonight, but it talks about, you know, plan your cleanup requests and there's a link and here, so I don't know if maybe that's an option.
Sure.
At least it's a source.
Uh huh, yeah.
I mean, so-
Was this the email that talked about the ball or the gala or whatever it was?
Well, yeah. So there's an awards presentation and then there was stuff under it.
Okay, so this is on that email?
Yeah, so yeah, just keep scrolling. Yeah, okay, cool.
Excellent, so I will forward that to you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because there's some links on it, because it talks about, you know, download our free guide to organizing CSX. Wow, I really can't talk tonight. Successful litter cleanup, stop laughing at me, I already got laughed at earlier tonight. You know, register, I'll fill you in. Register your cleanups on our website, report your cleanup results, so.
Oh, excellent.
Yep.
All right, good.
Cool, yeah.
All right. Any other conservation issues?
Feel free, just let us know if there are.
Okay.
Come on back in.
And we wanted to put out a joint letter between us and you guys, thanking you for the yellow bags, because that was such a giant concern at Coffee Talk 2-0 about the trash in town. So, you know, wanna put out thank you or thank yous are due.
You're welcome. Anything we can do to help keep Berlin clean and beautiful. Excellent. Good?
I'm all set. How about you? I'm good.
Thank you for your participation. It was welcome. I felt it right here.
Welcome to my Wednesday night. Thanks, guys. Bye-bye.
We could offer a contest to like, you know, name the blinky sign. Put messages up on the blinky sign and get like a $25 gift certificate to something.
I was there last week and I saw it today. So a big, huge box where they're collecting plastic bags for recycling. Coffee basket.
By the door.
Oh, good.
Right by the door, the entryway. Where the driving carts are.
Yep, right in that entryway. Yep, the main, the main, like, well, I don't know if there's one at the other end. I went in.
I have bags in my bag, my car. Do you think I remember to take them to market baskets?
Thank you.
Thank you, careful.
Thank you.
We do have police in the back, so if you fell down, we'd be able to administer first aid, we got you. Just saying, we're all around, you know, helpful.
All right, do we want to go back to the-
Yeah, let's go back down order.
We deferred the OSHA safety officer, correct?
Yes, till new chief in place. And deferred number four, so five.
Selection of the town administrator recruiting firm. We needed to sign this too.
Need a cough drop? Okay. All right, I guess I'm in the bag. You're welcome.
All right, there's a bunch to sign. That's for the town barn.
Oh, our thanks.
Yep.
Tonight could be an early meeting, just so.
Could be.
Mm-hmm. All righty, all signed.
Okay. Thank you. So we need to talk about the two interviews that we had last week for firing EMS chief.
No, TA.
I mean, not firing EMS chief, sorry, TA. So, who would like to start?
I'll go. I liked both, but I was more drawn towards MRI. The reason being, they were, they've been in business for 28 years compared to five years for a community. What I liked, I liked two main things about them is that they interviewed us and they wanted to find out more about what we wanted and what we needed and if our needs had changed with that, where the other one didn't. So it seemed like there was more vested interest for the guys from MRI. And I also liked how they expressed that they looked beyond, that even though the request was, we need a seasoned TA, that they've hired somebody with an education background, they've hired somebody with a military background. So they're just not looking here, they're looking here to find the best possible fit. You know, the other items, you know, both had experience with, you know, city managers or TAs in various communities. You know, Community had one in Billerica, MRI had another one in Billerica. So they seem to cross some paths, but, and again, the number of placements that MRI has had compared to Community was like, I looked at it for Community, it was only 31 recruitment, but out of that 31, there was only 10. So again, if you're looking for someone to take the town forward, to find the right person, I'm thinking, you know, my feeling is more towards MRI than Community.
Okay.
See, I had the exact opposite feel. I felt that Community Paradigm would be easier to work with, but the two folks who came in here, the Harvard connection was very good. The examples of Foxborough in the initial, and the other examples in the initial RFP were spot on for our community. They've been following our process all along. The fact that the one guy was from Harvard and had-
From Bolton.
Or Bolton?
No, he was actually, the Paradigm guy was from Harvard.
He worked at Harvard.
The second, yeah, he was a TA in Harvard.
But he lives in Bolton.
And he had written our-
Yeah, personnel bylaws.
Our personnel bylaws. He knew tons about our community. Community Paradigm, to me, was the obvious choice. It also, the folks from our screening committee-
Well, we need to do our discussion first.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean-
I felt as though, like you said, Peg, that they were trying to get information from us, the MRI, and they were listening to what, you know, what kind of things we're looking for. It didn't feel the same with Bernie. I felt as though, I mean, I hate to say it, but I felt a little bit like I was listening to a used car salesman. But I did appreciate the fact that a fellow from Bolton, you know, might be an advantage with their firm, but I felt as though that MRI, both of the fellows that came, were listening to us to see what we're looking for. And they had been in business a lot longer than Community Paradigm. I'm trying to think of some other things, but I think you mentioned them all, Peg, actually.
I can tell you, the other thing that really put me off about our MRI was when they said we needed someone young and enthusiastic.
That we do?
That we did. That actually was a statement, that we needed somebody young and enthusiastic. I think that's kind of not what we're looking for.
No, not necessarily, but they're probably gauging it to the fact that there's probably not a lot to pick from right now. Maybe they're encouraging us to consider that. I don't remember the comment. Any, anything else?
No. No, I'm just going back through my notes. I mean, I think I've hit everything.
Well, if there's no more discussion, then I guess I would encourage a motion.
I want a motion to go with Community Paradigm.
Is there a second?
You can second and vote against it. It's just a motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, anything else to be said? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. No.
Do I hear another motion or I can make the motion?
Okay.
I make a motion that we do start negotiations with MRI for a town administrator search firm.
Second?
Anything else to be said? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. I hadn't thought about what the next step would be. Would you like to send emails to both of them? And I guess they will probably be in touch with the next steps for us.
Ask MRI to direct on the next steps.
Yes, or, yeah.
Can I ask a question and I probably have missed it? Did we ever see costs for either?
Nope. There's still envelopes.
Yeah, I actually technically opened them, but they, you don't have to.
So we'll never see them?
Nope.
Never? Never, ever?
Guess.
Guess, seven. My guess is seven.
I was looking, I was telling Lisa, I was looking through my emails for the email with the costs and-
No, because she handed, no, because she handed everything out to us that night.
Right.
And I remember the little brown envelopes, but I didn't, I didn't see them.
I thought it had been emailed. Nope.
So we're on for 7:30 Wednesday night, 7:45?
7:45.
Okay. I'll meet you here? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. And this isn't a final cost either, because the gentleman-
There were choices within their, those à la carte choices.
Okay.
Right.
Well, and he said too, based on our input, that he might be willing to go back and renegotiate as well, so, okay.
You might want to, just a thought, but since you're hiring MRI for this and they are the only one for the fire screening committee, you probably want to see if they would-
Do a bargain price?
Yes.
Okay. It's a good point. Because, oh, where's that?
Now, that brings up the subject of, of-
We took a paper.
Mary had wondered whether we were gonna let MRI know that they are the only one for the fire search. Is that it? Do we go ahead and, would you like to just go ahead and interview them as far as that's concerned anyway?
I think, yeah, I mean, I would like to talk to them.
I guess, my feeling on that is we've already worked with them from a fire perspective and had a good working relationship with them. I'm assuming, did you work with Alan Goulding?
I did, I worked with Alan.
And you had a very good experience with them from the fire perspective when we did that?
Yep.
I have no-
I had to do a lot of the fire department that too.
I have no issue with-
And they were doing a good job of that.
Just hiring, since they're the only one.
Yeah, because their price for fire is 200 less than TA, so maybe if we combine the two, they can give a better overall price.
Do you want me to talk to them about that?
Yes, please.
All right.
And I will email, so if you're gonna talk to them, then I'll need to email them, correct? And tell them not to come?
True.
Okay.
Not to come.
You don't need to email them.
Right.
So scrub off that appointment for the fourth and we can move.
Well, let me, let me get ahold of them.
All right.
See if they still want to come in, just to talk about anything in particular, or, I'll try and get ahold of them tomorrow. All right. All right, I think we're down to Coffee Talk, follow up.
All right, so I went through, thank you for your input, appreciated the both of you. So I went through today, and that's why you have a paper copy, I added the information from CSX that Mary had provided to the gentleman whose name I cannot remember. Thank you, for the telephone number, the email, and also a website to reach out, to talk to them about the concern about the safety of tracks and the debris in the area. So just to review the discussion on weak to strong chief, there didn't seem to be much sentiment to change it, so we move on. 58 South Street, question to ask the public if there was continued interest to try and save that piece of land. It was a resounding yes, but obviously the overall question is how much? So the action item takeaway was for you to talk to Mark and see, oh, see what the toe has for options. Look at that, you didn't pick that up.
Yeah, I did on my copy.
Ah, see what the town has for options. Lisa was kind enough to do the TA administrator updates. Big discussion was about the overall safety in the traffic in the center of town, so Chief Galvin had talked about the mirror by Linden, probably not an option. The red flag is in the bucket, wasn't familiar, but there was a great website that was provided for people to go and look at. Woodward Ave, to only go one way, which is part of a larger complete streets project. Pleasant and South Street needs a stop sign, that there was discussion that River Bridge is responsible for traffic mitigation, but there hasn't, thankfully, there hasn't been a high incidence of accidents there. Speeding in the town, I noticed that there were a couple folks that reached out to Chief Galvin, and he kindly responded back and said, hey, can we sit in your yard? And they said, sure, come on in. So if there's any other folks that are out there that are concerned about speeding on their road, please reach out to Chief Galvin, he'll come sit in your driveway for that. The railroad tracks on Crosby, we talked about the update on the library septic system. I had reached out to the highway supervisor and building inspector, because they were taking the lead on this. Was supposed to hear something back last week from the highway supervisor, but did not, so I'll follow up. Information on the marijuana facility in Hudson. Again, Chief Galvin said that he's waiting on a requested professional traffic management plan from the owner. There's still an open question on the proximity of the dispensary to school, so we'll let Chief Galvin handle that. Awesome comments on the ease of obtaining a burn permit. Winter closing policy, we just went over. Again, tr- Again, trash, about the amount of trash, so kudos to the conservation committee for dropping off the yellow bags, and hopefully Louise can find us more information on how to get additional yellow bags. And then, Chris, you had one on the Toll House.
Tollman.
Thank you.
Tollman Greenhouse.
She's thinking cookies.
I need to go home. Call of the day. The Tollman Greenhouse property, so I don't know if there's any information that you can share that I can update.
I think Dennis is going to come in and talk to us about the Tollman property specifically. We had a meeting this afternoon on tax, taking tax titles, I guess that's what it's called. So I think he is really leaving it in the selectmen's ballpark, as far as do we want to go forward with something about this? And he will come to an upcoming meeting to explain exactly what some of the things are that we need to consider in making a decision. It was a very interesting meeting.
About the greenhouse?
No, no, just about the tax taking. But that's about all I learned about the Tollman Greenhouse property.
All right. And then the last one was a question on stray animals, and where Chief Galvin had requested additional funding, and then there was an awesome email that came through about a happy ending to a lost dog in Berlin, that people got out, they involved Helen Roach, our animal control officer, and she was instrumental, they all were, in returning the lost dog, especially during the extreme cold weather last weekend, back to its owner. So a shout out to everybody who did that. So I'd like to probably pop that story in to show how the people of Berlin really pull together when there's something out there that they can do. And that's all I had, that's all I got.
Was there anything else that we needed to follow up on that we haven't so far?
I'm gonna...
Pretty well with that?
No. I mean, I reached out to Naughton and Tran to see about the possibility of a traffic study, because where it's, center of road is a state road, we're probably going to need a little bit more muscle to do anything, either to get blinky pedestrian signs or do something about that one, and then at the crosswalk across from Lindsay's Old House, Bullard, and just the amount of traffic coming up from Pleasant, coming up from South, and then trying to merge onto 62 heading towards Clan.
Clinton, is there any plans in the future for a light at the corner of Pleasant and Route 62?
Not yet, but I would assume it's going to have to be something that starts to be discussed as one of a few intersections.
Quite a line of traffic certain times of day.
It's brutal.
For about two hours a day, it's tough. That's one of the areas that will need to be discussed, five corners is the other one.
You mean the use your blinker sign doesn't work all the time?
Not quite.
Did you put that there?
How did you not put that there?
No, kudos to whoever did, I just...
Some of that is addressed in Complete Streets. CMRPC also does traffic counts for us every year, so if you do have a particular area you're interested in, let Tim Wheeler know, and he contacts with them, and they do traffic counts for us.
Okay.
Yeah, it was interesting, they actually came up and asked him about the Randall and West Street intersection, which to me was much less of a concern than several others. Relayed that message.
Did they, did they used to have a stop sign at the corner of Randall and Lancaster at one point, and then they took it away?
Yes.
It was there for a while, and now it's gone.
Coming down Randall...
I think...
Coming off Lancaster onto Randall? There was a, there, there was a stop sign there.
Coming from Lancaster onto Randall? No, from, from...
It was a yield.
Continuing on Randall, so Randall is actually a stop sign that breaks Randall if you're coming from Coors.
So coming down and then hooking, hooking right?
And Mrs. Jermaine's corner.
Okay, there was a stop sign there?
It used to be a yield years ago, then there was nothing.
Somebody took the sign. Okay.
All right.
All right. So I can make some changes and send back around, and then we should be ready to roll to get this posted.
All right.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Do you want that back on next week's agenda?
Yeah, I'll have it done by then.
Okay.
So the next thing is to, the letter for Curtis Cole confirming Richard Avenue is not a public way. Was that the only, I just feel as though there's more that we needed to answer, the questions that were here.
Oh, I don't know, it's just a draft.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there was that, there was the return of money.
Right.
The town spent the money, but our awesome accountant found the money.
It was returned.
And it was returned to him. 2004, '14, one of those?
'04, I think.
Yeah. So the money went...
Two thousand fourteen, yeah.
So either way, the money went back to him, so the accusation of us just is...
Unless there was something else, that was the only one I could find, but that was not for his driveway permit, that was for planning board.
I mean, because I can tell you that I went yesterday, and as I stood there, I watched the water come down the other side of the road, not on the questionable side of the road.
And Dave put dye in the water to show where the water flowed.
Right.
That seems to me to be over and above.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It seemed really clear from the pictures, I don't know why, but regardless.
Well, I mean, and think about it, water is water. If it's going to be a heavy duty soaking rain, the water's going to go wherever it's going to go, regardless of how many drains you put in. And it's funny, because Rick Rainville came down, so Richard Strive is here, and Rick lives here, and he saw me standing out there, and he came down, and he's like, "What you looking at?" I'm like, "The drain." And he said, "You know, it used to be here on the grass, but they moved it, and I don't think that there's a problem, ever since they moved it." And I'm like, "All righty, you live there."
Okay.
Want to hold on the letter?
No, I'm, I'm just, is it here?
There's a flag on it.
Yep. I don't know if you guys want to look it over and say yes, no?
Yeah, I would.
I think I saw it earlier today, didn't I?
Yeah, I think it came in email, I just didn't...
Yeah, 2004, the money went back to him, so...
Oh, 2004, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm good.
All right.
I'm surprised I have to sign it. Thanks ladies, appreciate that.
I would suggest it between the records as a vote, so that it's definitive, clear that the town is answering.
And maybe an easily accessible file for the next time this comes around.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. And then there is one from Ron, and planning board too.
That'll be an insert, and so will the accountant's statement.
Okay, there you go.
Discussion regarding needed updates to town office storm closure policy, I think...
Well, Dennis wanted to have some discussion about how, I don't know if that's part of the policy, but how he accounts for...
Oh, that's right. He, yeah. If we're going to make it an administrative absence, is this a problem? Do we need to have, we work it out amongst ourselves here?
He could make a suggestion as to what he wants, or he can just do it.
Well, you wouldn't track, you wouldn't track administrative absence, because what are you tracking it for? It's not like you get five credited for a year.
Right. So there's no need to.
Either you use it or you don't use it, if you're here...
And we spent weeks last year doing this policy, and nobody...
Put in for it.
Parked up, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just come back again if you have something else to say, but he didn't really quantify what he needed, so...
No, he was just asking us if he, if we wanted him to track it.
I think we're good.
I think we need, that's fine.
Agreed.
All right. So we're down to other new business. Anything?
No, don't look at me like that. I already talked about the beautification one.
All right.
Nope.
Old business.
I put a couple of things in the back of the folder, old business.
Old biz.
Outstanding budgets?
Yeah, the police communications, and we don't have a meeting till the 31st, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
So we'll, and hopefully...
The selectmen appointee budgets that, you know...
Off the top of my head, I don't remember, there was only a few of them. I think Finance Committee hasn't put in their budget yet.
Yeah, they're on the list. Well, we'll talk to them on Wednesday, when we go. Okay.
Oh, you guys are going?
Yes, June asked me to attend with her, I told her I'd be absolutely thrilled to.
All right. Okay, police communications, do we need to, did we approve the Worcester Regional Retirement one?
No, it's mandatory, per se, so in the past, I've just, in the past, it used to just be raised on the recap sheet, nobody ever saw it.
Okay.
It just happened.
Okay. We couldn't remember from last year.
So we started bringing it in from a line item now, just because it's there, we have to pay it, so...
I'm still working on getting Amy to come on a date when we'll work for Planning Board and ZBA. She wasn't available on the first date that Tim actually suggested. I know we've had the issue with Whitney Estates and the condo fee. I didn't know whether this is something we want to wait and perhaps discuss, or let Amy know about when she comes, or do we want to send it to Town Council?
Why don't you give it to her as an example when they come?
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Send it to her now, while you're still batting around dates, just so she has the material?
Yeah, I mean, I mentioned it when I emailed her, but...
This is a real example.
I didn't give her any backup data. So I can perhaps do that, or... If I need, if I need to find the emails, I'll, I'll be in touch. All right. Yep, I think I got that one. So, new business, old business. Boy, I think we covered quite a bit here.
Mm-hmm.
We did. Selectmen liaison updates.
We're going to get rid of that.
Spoiler plate, I'll put that up there.
Yeah, take that up there, but is there anything that anybody wants to fill us in on? I believe Joe is meeting with the personnel on Wednesday. Yep. And I did send him a copy of the current building, building inspector job description, so he'd have a copy and take a look at it first, because I, I don't believe he'd seen it either.
So this one?
Yes.
That was, it was used when the job was posted.
Right.
So he's seen it in the past.
He may have, but he didn't think there was one, and neither did, neither did anybody else here.
Nobody did.
So this is the one that you approved?
Except for the...
Or that we approved, and then here's the one that Mary found? So I don't know if you just wanted to, you got them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other questions, comments, or otherwise? There was the, I thought you were going to ask about that grant, the regional HR grant, and are we interested?
I thought we already decided that we weren't.
Yeah, that was the one where Tim, yes, Tim came back and said that he looked up and the financials didn't look comfy.
Now I remember.
So he wanted to pass.
I pushed that email through where they're asking for letters of support, but I know that the answer was already no.
No, correct.
I'd not assume the ask.
All right, then we've no need for executive session, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Before we go, go Pats.
Great.
We go, and I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.